Good evening, everybody. I'll be chairing the meeting tonight. Alicia Greco, chairperson, is joining us remotely due to geographic distance. And all votes tonight will be taken by roll call vote. Tonight, I'm going to take public comment, but what I'm going to do is if we have any questions about the town hall project, if we could save those till after the presentation, because I think the presentation will answer a good amount of them, so we'll take some of those questions after. So do we have any public comment tonight? All right, moving on. We have board and committee reports. The chair has signed the PR 2315, the PR 2316, and the PR 2316 for the select board.
You're going to need a motion or that is a motion?
I don't think so. And municipal building committee update. You ready for us?
Yeah, thank you. Hey, and good evening, everyone. My name's Bob Connors, chairperson Greco, members of the select board. On behalf of the municipal building committee, I'm submitting an update regarding the schedule, local permitting approvals, current estimate of probable cost, proposed building location, draft schematic layout, and previous mini, excuse me, meeting records. The committee has received a charge from the select board to undertake the design, management, and construction of two-and-a-half-story standalone town hall. We have undertaken an innovative and efficient approach to the design, construction of a new town hall that will address the needs of the community. We are working with all department heads, the planning board, conservation commission, to analyze and expedite local approvals to meet the projected bid release of November 2023. The project is currently working through schematic design phase. At the conclusion of this phase, the project architect will provide an updated project estimate in schematic drawings, at which time the current estimate of cost will be revised. Our project schedule, which is certainly, these are all draft schedules, subjects to certainly town meeting and select board next steps. Early March is the target date for release of schematic design drawings and schematic design cost estimate to the select board for consideration at the annual town meeting, which is April 25, 2023, and a debt exclusion vote, which is May 9, 2023. November 20, November 2023 is the target date for bid documents. January 2024 is the target date for awarding a contract and notice to proceed. Currently, the committee's estimate of probable cost is based on available information as follows. Construction cost: $8,223,000. Project cost, which includes designer, OPM, testing, is $1,427,000, $47,500, excuse me. FF and E security card access: $599,000. Project-related expenses: $56,000. Project contingency is $635,775. Estimate of probable cost as of today, based on available information, is $10,885,275. The next page of your packet has the municipal building committee charge. If I direct you to tab two, the, my summary gives you a broad brush of what the rest of the packet says. Certainly, we're projecting cost at this point. There'll be steps along the way, as I mentioned, that once we close out the schematic design phase, it gives us a much better third-party estimate, which we will then update all of our projected costs. Right now, the cost that we're using, we're looking back over what bids were awarded on other town halls. And it does take our breath away at what the cost per square foot has been averaging. So that will change. This gives you all on tab two, it gives you the projected schedule right down to when, you know, furniture installation and move-in. Now, certainly, this is all subject to, one, what the select board does, two, what town meeting decides, and three, what the voters decide. Do they want to make an investment in this project at this time? If you turn to tab three, this is local approvals and permitting. One of the interesting parts, we've been at this, the town, since about 2012, looking up and down Morgan Ave for different projects. This was a summary that was prepared back in 2018 for the police station, and it was still whether it was going to be a combined facility at 25 High Road or a standalone facility at 7 Morgan Ave. But the data that was provided in this is still current today. So it gives us site conditions, zoning, parking, water, sewer, drainage systems, natural gas services, soil conditions testing, wetland resource areas, right down to natural heritage for endangered species, MAS DEP water supply protection area, and flood zone. So those are analysis. This was already pre-done back in 2018, but it is still relevant for the 25 High Road. If you turn to tab four, this is a further breakdown of the schedule of probable cost. So again, that's just reference, if you really wanted to determine how we came up with certain numbers. I think it should be noted that within the number I quoted, we're not going to be going to bid at the earliest, if this project meets town meeting approval and goes forward, until late November. It's going to go to bid. We won't be getting bids until beginning of 2024. So we have included an escalation factor on construction cost of 4%. Now, what we're seeing in the market is prices are not escalating quite as high as they have been. Supply chain issues are sorting themselves out, and projects are really being, projects that needed to get done have been done, others are on hold, letting everything kind of settle out. So carrying a 4% escalation, no, it's good business practice for a project like this. The other number we use is project contingency. That's for change orders. No set of building plans are 100% complete. Usually, you get about a set of drawings that are 90% complete, and so you have a variance of about 10%. So what will happen is, as we get hotter numbers, and this goes to a town meeting or an override vote, the project contingency will go from 7% down to 5%. Again, these are projections at this point. In the next few weeks, we will have a third-party hot estimate based on schematic design. If you turn to tab five, this is site plan, proposed building location. Okay? I think you've seen this. This was, I think, included in Jeff Shaw's original presentation, probably back in June of 2022. And the, so in going through this, you know, it's funny, I was going back through documents, and it, as all of us that have been, you know, working with the town, around the town, looking up information, going back to 2012, Martha and I were on the original site selection committee, Public Safety Site Selection Committee. And that was 2012, when we were talking about police station, fire station, and certainly town hall. In April of 2014, Capital Planning Committee got involved in looking at these projects, and especially the police station. But back in 2014, there were a number of discussions and joint meetings that we had. One comes to mind, was in the library over in Byfield, and it was regarding the planning board, capital planning committee, finance committee, select board, and probably anyone else who could fit in the room. And there were a number of decisions and discussions on where do you locate a police station, where do you locate a fire station, where do you locate a town hall? And the one common denominator we all agreed on that night was that if we're going to undertake a critical capital expenditure, like a fire, police, or a town hall, at a minimum, it should have a public, and it should have a public water and public sewer supply. And what that did was, it limited potential options. And Dana, I'm going to refer to my, I have to tell you, we're very lucky. We have a great committee on our municipal building committee. Martha is a registered architect, and just invaluable in the process. Eric Svan is an architect, and he, I don't know if he works in buildings less than a half a billion dollars. John Keller is an OPM that works all over New England on the institutional level. And then we have Dana. We have captain of industry here, literally, and who has been a critical player and partner on working all through this. We're processing a lot of paper, a lot of data at this point. So this is a status update, certainly not the final draft, but Dana, we were talking about this at our last meeting on, the governor's lot had sewer, it had water, governors was interested in having a police station. The site had some challenges, the distance from their wastewater treatment plant, the presence of ledge, and then a issue about the capacity of their existing wastewater treatment plant. And Dana, I think you followed up with them on a discussion about a town hall at that site.
I did. And I didn't specifically come out and ask them the hard question, because I didn't really want to do that. However, when the governors proposed the donation of the property was when the police station was going to be an integral part of that site. And the idea that the governors wanted was to be able to kind of market that police station onsite as a safety issue for their students and, you know, the surrounding community. Well, I just want to say that, and I don't mean to put words in anybody's mouth, but now that the police station is a completed project down on Morgan Avenue, you know, the governors insight to have it there, let's just say it's not quite as intense as it used to be. So when you marry that up with the water issues, and the sewer issues, and the other things that would be cost-prohibited, it's, I don't feel as though it's a viable location anymore.
You know, the process usually is a process of elimination. It's not like, that's my best spot, I want to do that. It's incrementally, you usually eliminate sites. So the next site that met this criteria, having public water, public sewer, was on Hanover Street, the Round School, for those that know it well. We meet there, we vote there, we do a lot of things. We have a town meeting there. And back in May of 2021, the town contracted with Patrick Seacamp, who was a wetland consultant and expert that is well-renowned within the environmental circle. And they did a site walk out on that property. And Bill Holt was our conservation agent at that time. And although there's a number of acres, it's primarily wet, there are some upland locations. But at the end of the day, there wasn't one, wasn't one area that would sustain a council and aging facility and its infrastructure, which is a lesser requirement than what you would need for a town hall. And so his final line was, none of the upland areas would support the size building and infrastructure required by the COA. And then the other question came up, that council and aging interacting with the school, they were already kind of there doing that. But imagine now it's 8:30 in the morning, and you're coming to town hall, and you've got a parking lot full of buses, you have traffic in and out, and does Newbury want to expend the capital monies that we would need to build a building behind a building? It would not be on Hanover Street. So that basically excluded by the fact that it wouldn't support the size building that is proposed. If you turn to your next page, again, going back to the amount of work, investigation, and research that's been done in the Morgan Ave High Road, the town had a environmental Phase 1 site assessment, known as a 21E report. And at that time, it went through with detail, and again, there's an executive summary that was provided. But the argument is, not the argument, the meat of the report basically says, ransom concludes that no additional investigation is warranted at this time on 25 High Road. So these are things that were bought and paid for in all pluses for considering the 25 High Road site. The next page in your packet is a site plan, and amazingly enough, it goes back when the town was considering a joint facility for police and fire at the Morgan Ave lot, and so. But again, the detail that's on this plan, the elevations of inwards, pipe locations, curb cuts, it's invaluable that we don't have to repay for to do it. Okay, if you turn to-
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, you sure can, Dana.
About that? And it's up on the screen right now, in the packet. It's kind of small and hard to read and see. The building, the building to the right?
Yep.
Is that our existing fire station right now?
No, no, no. That's where your police station is.
That's the, that's the police station.
There was a evolution in this whole process-
This right here?
Where that, that was one of the options, when it was, was it going to be a combined police-fire, or was it going to be a combined town hall? Certainly, there's an economy and scale when you can have two facilities, two critical facilities share the same complex, you know, for the obvious reason.
Yeah, I guess the ledge, I didn't spend a lot of time on the lawn, on the ledge here. And what confused me a little bit was the parking spaces-
The overlay, yeah.
The overlay of the parking spaces on top of the fire station. I'm like, well, where'd the fire station go? You know? But I see it now.
It's a transitional plan that shows the evolution of how many places we've looked at, you know? This can's been kicked around quite extensively. Okay, so if we turn to tab six, all right, this gives you, this gives us the, it gives you the elevations, looking at the, so I think the easiest way, if you were coming out of Parker Street, looking back at town hall, the existing town hall, this would give you a rendering of what town hall could be, could look like. The next page within this tab is if you were coming from Rolfs Lane, heading, I guess, heading west on Route 1, 1A, you'd be looking at the corner of Morgan Ave in High Road. The next page in the packet is, these are the first generation of floor plans, where that, how a project like this works is, the architects or a designer will sit down with municipal staff, and what they'll do is they'll start to identify programming needs. How many people? How many offices? How many file cabinets do you currently have? And then what do you project your growth may be over the next 20 or 30 years? So this is the first generation of actual, call them, pre-schematic designs. So it gives you the first floor, as you can see. You probably can't see the level of detail on it, but first floor, you walk in and you have your clerk's office to the right, you would have your treasurer's office to the left. But I think copies will be available of this, too, for anyone that wants to look at them. If you turn to your next page, actually, why don't I stop there? Any questions before I continue on? Or do we want me to finish this tab, and then at the end of this, we'll, if there's any questions that you have about-
Questions from the board at this time?
On what I'm talking about, I guess. Okay, so, all right, well, why don't I continue? We'll finish up the schematic design plans. So your next page is your second floor, in which, you know, currently, you have a, it's showing a meeting room similar to what we have here. On the first floor, it does show two large conference rooms that would be used for committee meetings. And then there's a small meeting room, which would be staff, would be the staff. The transition to the 21st century is that the offices of yesterday and the offices of today have dramatically changed. What used to be considered a normal-sized office was 140, 160, 180 square feet. Well, today, the maximum-size offices is typically within the 120 range. And assistants, part-time people, people that are not required to be in town hall for an eight-hour day, typically wind up in a cube, which is 64 square feet. So you've gone from 160 square feet to 120 to 64. Now, that's the model you started out with. That doesn't necessarily match the programming needs of how each department operates. Municipal government does have a unique, a little different operational need. Okay. So if you turn to tab seven, tab seven is just a record of our meeting minutes. We've been meeting since, our first meeting was September 27, 2022, and our last meeting was this morning at 7:30. If we turn to tab eight, last Monday was our last meeting of detail. And within this file, this tab, it gives you kind of the sausage-making of what goes into a meeting packet and what we look at. And at that point, at the February 6 meeting, the architects provided the rendition of floor plans, which you just saw. And now that's reviewed by the committee, by staff, and we come back with comments. Dana had some great ideas, where that, we start out with a box that's so big, and then you're trying to put all the pieces into it. Dana, we were working on the floor plans, and having the lobby aligned with the elevator and providing some seating, so that if you're waiting to do a meeting, Dana had some great ideas about simply relocating transaction windows to the hallway and not in the lobby. And what it did is provided, now, the architects were paying a lot of money, didn't think of it, our captain of the skies did. And so, again, I just wanted to give you kind of a flavor of what goes on. And at the meetings, we're laser-focused at the task at hand, because, you know, we're dealing in great detail, and there's a lot of moving pieces on this. But that's pretty much the update. That's electronic as well, so you can have that. I think the big question is the pathway the town hall needs. That's one of the questions that has come up. What is the site selection? Town hall at High Road? And what I did was, being in the business and over the years, actually been able to help renovate town hall and the fire station and the town barn, you get to know the inner workings and the details and the deficiencies of these buildings. So the path to town hall needs. 10 years ago, Public Safety Site Selection Committee was tasked with reviewing all available site options for locating a new police station and/or a combined town hall, fire station, police station, safety complex, and reporting back to the selectmen. The result? Town residents rejected a public safety complex option right off the bat. Five years ago, 2017, town meeting authorized a standalone police station at 7 Morgan Ave with any remaining funds to undertake the remodeling or extraordinary repairs to High Road to meet the needs of town hall. In 2019, town meeting authorized an increased expenditure from $6.5 million to $8.2 million to construct a standalone police station only. The question? When extraordinary repairs and a major addition will cost more than the replacement with new construction? That's the question. How do you do the measurements on that? So extraordinary repairs involve large expenditures that extend the useful life of an asset. For example, the replacement of a building, roof, heating system, bathroom facilities, exterior glazing system is considered extraordinary repairs that allows a building to use beyond its normal operating life. When you repurpose and/or expand an old building, the more it will cost to renovate and upgrade the existing building per current, excuse me, when you repurpose, expand an older building, the more it will cost to renovate and upgrade the existing building per current building, ADA, life safety, and health codes. Renovations also leave room for unexpected, what conditions or surprises you run into once construction begins, which can potentially add to cost and time to the project. Integrating a new addition into an existing older building presents access egress and floor elevation challenges. Protection, too. Current building is suitable candidate for extraordinary repairs, not a replacement, as the current square footage meets the operational needs of the fire department. I think that's really the key. If the building is of sufficient, if your building is of sufficient size, then doing the upgrades makes sense. But if it does not meet the programming needs, and you have to expand and do a major addition, then you have to take a much harder look at it, depending on the age of the building. So existing conditions on High Road. Exterior walls are 2x4, do not meet current AFACT or stretch energy code requirements. Construction with about nine-foot-to-floor-to-ceiling height on the main level, which is insufficient to house the required MEP HVAC sprinkler systems, which require about 30 inches of clear space above a ceiling. which require about 30 inches of clear space above a ceiling. The ground level basement area has a combination of wood framing, masonry block, fieldstone, poured concrete exterior walls with 7'4" floor to ceiling height without allowance for MEP HVAC sprinkler and a finished ceiling. State Building Code requires a minimum of 7'6" finished ceiling height to be habitable office space for town employees. Exterior walls. Surface finishes include drywall, homosot, also known as soundboard, as painted walls. Exterior doors are a combination of fire-rated doors, unrated hollow doors and wood jams. Exterior windows are at the end of their useful life and do not meet the current energy code. Existing electrical wiring is a combination of old BX wiring, Romex and some metal clad wiring. Metal clad wiring is the current electrical code for municipal public assembly buildings. Bathroom facilities do not meet the current plumbing code, fixture count and floor drain requirements. Now, your, your occupancy of the building and its full occupancy has to match the number of toilets, journals, installs and lavatories. Usable floor space for programmable needs. The current structure at 25 High Road with front entryway steps and ADA ramp has a footprint of about 4,000 square feet. This level has about 3,500 gross square feet with about a 70% usable space of 2,450 square feet. The basement area ceiling height precludes the use for programming needs but would be available for MEP HVAC requirements. The footprint, the footprint of a suitable addition would require a two-story, 3,450 square foot addition resulting in a footprint of 7,000 square feet, eliminating more parking spaces than the proposed footprint of 5,200 square feet by the Municipal Building Committee. Conclusion? The Municipal Building Committee recommends building a new two-and-a-half story Town Hall to meet the program needs that will address Newbury's projected growth over the next 20 years and cost less money. When do we start building? I think that, I just wanted to be able to give you a little snapshot. This has been talked, talked about for so long and many of us have been involved in different phases of it. I think it, it was just time to quantify how we got to this point. And then it's the will of the town if we want to make an investment at this time in a project of this size.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Well done. Full on thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you, you and your group did a lot of work, which is appreciated, but I do have a few questions. Now, you indicated that the charge you were given was to build a two-and-a-half story standalone building. When was that charge given to you? Are you saying the 2019 vote?
Uh, no, I think if you look at the, if you go to Tab 1, Jerry, it's a large page, Municipal Building Charge. And basically the charge was, what we did at the police station was two-and-a-half stories utilizing the attic space for mechanical storage and stuff like that.
But that's not my question. My question is, you received a charge from the select board to undertake the design management and construction of a two-and-a-half story. When did the selectmen give you that authorization?
Well, you have, I mean, why don't I read the charge? "A committee consisting of three voting members and two advisory members will be appointed to work with architects and OPMs to deliver plans for the construction of a Town Hall that meets the needs, the Town of Newbury and will address the projected growth over the same, over the next 30 years. The committee shall coordinate all bidding construction with Chief Procurement Officer and the Town. No expenditure of funds shall be permitted without approval of the Town Accountant and Chief Financial Officer. The committee shall confirm, the committee shall conform to all open meeting law and public record law requirements. Committee shall meet regularly and shall provide the select board with periodic updates."
Yeah, but thank you for that, but you didn't answer my question. When did you receive the authorization to have this charge? I just need the background.
I, you know what? I think it's just been general discussion that it was to look at duplicating what we did at the police station because it was a project we were able to deliver on time and under budget during COVID. And, and I think the intent was is that having that empirical record of materials, schedule of values actually expedited how far along we are with the committee at this point.
So I guess the answer to my question is, there hasn't been a, a town vote or town on giving you the charge?
No, I think it was, it was more, it was direction, but it wasn't restricted.
By whom?
Well, I mean, it was just put the board here.
Mr., Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Yes, Alicia.
So back on August 23rd of 2022 of this year, this board, this current board, the five members that are currently sitting on it, voted unanimously to approve this charge. And, and that's how the board received it. Is that, does that answer your question, Jerry?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
My other question is, you indicate that the amounts that you're using, the 10,000, 10 million figure, that's an estimate.
Oh yeah, certainly.
Do you have an idea? I know you said, you know, when you get the, you know, the next schematics and all the final drafts, you'll have a revised estimate. Do you have any idea how much it's going to be revised by?
No, you know what? I don't because we, we're using $640 a square foot for construction costs, which is mind boggling. The, once we get to schematic design, the architects have given us the bid results over the last six months when we had probably super inflation, we had supply chain issues and costs were just exorbitant.
Have they come down?
Well, we, we'll find out. We'll find out. I think, I, I view it, Jerry, that carrying the $640 is the best information we have available looking back. The third-party estimate, once we close out schematic design, will be kind of real-time cost today, not looking back over the last six months, which probably substantially higher than they may be today. But, you know, my view is, costs are not going to come down, but they may not go up as fast. We're carrying 4% for escalation, 7% for contingency. It's well over a million dollars on an $8 million build. And if it doesn't go up a dollar, great, but we'll know. It, it's a bouncing ball. And so the schematic design part of it, when we get that estimate and then when it goes out to bid and we get all the filed sub bidders and comes in, flip a coin. I mean, I hate to say it, who's looking for a project and, so you'll, you're going to get a, another update from us within the next couple of weeks, which will be either confirming the numbers we have or introducing the latest round of numbers that we received.
Okay. And when, you said a couple of weeks?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we, if you look at our schedule on Tab 2, it, it gives you, we've tried to tie it into your meetings, timelines, so that your board, the select board can consider this for the Springtown meeting and the election in May. It's yeoman's work to get it this far, in, in all honesty, but we have a great committee and.
Well, in, in looking at the schedule, it indicates that you'll have a final amount regarding the amount of the debt exclusion by the 29th of March?
Yeah. So if you look back at my, my original presentation under project schedule, it says, early March is the target date for the release of schematic design drawings and schematic cost estimate to the select board. That's, that's the next step. So you're about two weeks away on that.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask one question?
Yes.
But I mean, if this were to go forward, those bill figures are an up-to-figure anyway. Suppose, you know, God is great and all of a sudden it's 540 instead of, you know, 640. I mean, you wouldn't spend the money. It would be an up-to-figure anyway that we were borrowing. Wouldn't it be Tracy like everything else we do?
Yeah, we're only going to borrow the amount that the project bids, or the project costs. For example, the, the police station came in, I think, 440,000 under budget. So that money, even, we have the debt authorization, but we didn't spend that money. And that can be used because of the language that Bob explained earlier. That can be used to go towards the Town Hall project.
And we're lucky in the fact that now we've prepared for this, so we've got money to deflect some of that cost too. I mean, we've never been in a better position and if we don't use it, it's the will of the town. And I, I sometimes think back to what things would have cost if we built it all at once and we would have been probably paying on it for six or seven years up until this date. So it's hard to listen to everything all at once and I just hope that people, and I know Jerry wants to ask another question, but I hope people really think for themselves on this project and draw their own conclusions.
Now, the, the old saying, if you're going to do it, the sooner you do it, is going to be the lowest cost dollars. So I think that rings true. Good, Jerry.
Sure. And the schematics show that it's going to be 14,500 square feet?
No.
No.
Well, 2,500 square feet for the first floor and then 12,500 square feet for the first and second floor and then an additional 2,500 square feet in the attic.
No, at each floor, yeah, you know what? And, and again, each floor, the footprint is basically 5,000 square feet. So it's, we're using, you'll see in our estimate of probable cost, we're using approximately 10,400 square feet for a budget number. So you've got 10,000 square feet is what's shown on the, the schematics that you have in your, in your packet. And there's about 2,900 square feet of attic space that we're incorporating. And I think the, the way I look at it, if, if we were going with a full basement concept, we'd have about 4,000 square feet of space in a basement. Groundwater has been a challenge in this area. We've had, the current building at its floor elevations had, has had flooding and that's at grade. And so the, the concept of utilizing the attic area for all your storage, all your mechanicals and, and other non-essential office sundry products makes the most sense. And, but you're building basically a 10,000 square foot office building with additional storage in the attic area.
Okay.
And it's priced differently too.
Okay. And how many square feet was the new police station that we built? That was 10,000?
It's almost a duplicate of that. That was 10,000 and a kind of a similar attic space.
Okay, so it's going to be the same size as the police station?
It's going to be, if you, if you look at the, if you look at the schematics, the shape is certainly different. I think if you go back, if you go back to Tab 6 and you look at the, the rendering, that's facing High Road. Okay, where the, the police station, there's a certain amount of privacy residents of the police station require. And locating, elongating that building and having the, the Sally Port in detention at the back of the building, a guest of Chief Fisher can enter the facility and leave the facility with some dignity in hand still, so.
Well, that's good, that's nice to hear.
Yeah.
Until they read their name in the newspaper.
No, no, that's true, that's true.
There goes your privacy. But in looking at the schematics, it seems that the, the building is fairly elevated. So is there going to be a lot of fill and will it make it higher than the, the police station?
No, it, well, you know what? The, the overall height, so I think the concept, and, and again, this is all part of schematic design and when we get into, you know, the DD drawings. If you look at the elevation of Morgan Ave, so if you're sitting standing at Morgan Ave looking back at the side of the, of the Town Hall, that whole area is elevated. It used to be probably a septic system of some sort. I know the leaching field got changed to the other side over time. That is all going to be brought down closer to the Morgan Ave. So it's going to be a blend of elevation from High Road to Morgan Ave. And it'll be a slab on grade doing that. Part of the reason you do that is you want to be closer to being grade so that access can be by walkway and not by ramp for, you know, ADA compliance and matters like that. But those are still work in progress though, Jerry. Those are, on the next round of drawings, will be addressed.
As far as you.
I can, I can answer that a little bit myself, just from being part of the process is it, there's been talk that if you take the, the basement level of the Town Hall, where the police used to be, you take that elevation right there and then you take the elevation of the, of the first floor, well, the only floor of the Town Hall actually, the slab elevation is going to be somewhere between those two levels. And the exact, am I correct when I say that? And, and the, the exact elevation hasn't, hasn't been determined yet. So you're gonna, I, I think, to make, I, I think it's gonna sit okay once all of that gets figured out. That's all I can say, from what I, from what my understanding.
The visual I have is a Woodbridge school. I mean, it, the rendering's kind of mirror of that. And it, it certainly is more, I mean, we're very conscious too on the architectural, you know, compliance with the neighborhood. And we're not going to see a lot of stainless steel and glass in this building.
Okay. As far as your schematics, they're just awful to read. I literally had to read them with a magnifying glass.
No, I, trying to get them down to a file size, Jerry, because they come this big.
Yeah.
I, I think if you want, Dana could probably get you a, a full-size set. He has a lot of pull at the committee.
You also got the computer too, Jerry, with the PDF.
Yeah, no, that's right too. If you, you can just expand it on that.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm just looking, I have a bunch of other questions, but you answered most of them.
Yeah, I think we, don't, I, I would just suggest, don't get hung up in the weeds on anything because this is still work in progress. There's labels on rooms that will change because we have to work with town staff so that how, how everything flows. We're not going to put the building inspector in the treasurer's office and, and matters like that, so. The boxes are going to be plus or minus, you know, tweaked a little bit. That's the next two weeks. See, in, in early March, you're going to get.
It'll be final, final?
Well, it's going to be final for your consideration of, if you're going to go forward at Town Meeting or put it on the ballot.
Okay. And just, how many people work in Town Hall daily?
Uh, that's a good question.
Perhaps Tracy can answer.
I can, I would have to go back and look at the programming comparisons.
By just reading the, the title of whose offices is who, looks like there's about 16 people.
16, 17.
Oh, it's very close.
Yeah, so we got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. Yeah, it looks more like 20.
Well, DPW's never been able to have a true office in Town Hall.
No, we haven't.
Well, and they may not now. Well, and they may not now, actually.
Right. But I, but I, you know, I think the.
That's one that might get eliminated.
I, I think that the thing that we're, we're looking at is, you know, the, the realization that offices have changed to a smaller size and the flexibility that cubicles give you. So people have a landing area. I mean, inspector comes in, he's going to be there for an hour and a half. He writes a report. He's not occupying an office that costs tens of thousands of dollars to build. He's sharing a cube.
One thing I think people have to realize too is because of Eric, because of Bob, and obviously John, you're working with people that are working in Boston. This might not be a really typical municipal building. It has synergy with all the new ideas, especially from universities and other types of office buildings in Boston. And that's why, you know, the size and the use of cubicles and the use of efficiency, I mean, this is, this is avant-garde thinking. This is coming, this is all 2022, right, Bob? So, and I mean, we're lucky.
All you bigger cities, all you bigger cities that have fifty, seventy-five employees are following this ball because of the sheer cost.
And they're helping us. I mean, it's amazing with the kind of energy.
Well, it's, our money we're spending too, so.
That's good.
Nice to manage it on the get-go.
Okay, yeah, I'll yield the floor to whoever else has questions.
Okay, thank you, Jerry.
Any other questions from any board members?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, certainly.
You, you, the, on tab three, you actually answered my, my, one of my questions, and it might be a little confusing to some about using the police station study here. And just flipping that over to, you know, the, the town, the town hall and where that's going to go, is, is, is this going to be revised?
It'll be, yeah, it'll, it'll be updated.
To make it the town hall?
It will, it will be updated, but the data will be reviewed.
But I understand, yeah, I, I kind of get that.
It'll be updated. We haven't, we haven't paid for a new study yet.
Right, I'm just curious. I mean, you, you kind of talked about that. And then the other one, the other tab was under tab five when you get back, and you talked about this too, about Walton Ave as a possible site. That's been talked about a lot. This particular study talks, you know, is talking about the COA. Could we maybe get an update whether it be, I understand we probably don't need to do a new, you know, concom walkthrough kind of thing, but, but could this be addressed so that it could be updated that the town, you know, to be the town hall instead of the COA? If you know what I mean? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, so I think that, well, this was actually more of an email communication from C-CAM, the conservation agent. I think we looked at it that would you be building a ten thousand square foot COA? I don't know what the size was being anticipated back in 2021. I think it would probably be three or four thousand square feet or?
If my memory serves me from wa, um, excuse me, from watching the Council on Aging meetings, I believe it was ten thousand square feet they wanted.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's the same size as the, we're talking.
I guess what I'm trying, I'm, I'm relatively convinced myself that this is not a viable location. That, that's really what I'm, what I'm trying to say. But I think it would be good if we could get it updated to that point.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think it's.
You know?
I, I think.
And I know there's going to be differences of opinion townwide on, on that comment, but personally, I don't feel as though this is a viable option.
What, what I would suggest we could do, and I, and I think it's a, it's a good, it's a good question, Dana, is we could send the proposed footprint of this building to C-CAM and, and see if the outcome would be any different than for the COA.
Yeah, whatever.
Okay.
You know?
And it, I mean, I think the, the big conflict for me at, at Hanover Street was just driving by there at eight thirty in the morning, and you get all the buses and you're trying to get in and out of there at, I could see where the COA was used to dealing. The schedules were relying where town meeting, uh, town hall hours could more collide with school hours. I, I'm not sure what the heavy traffic hours are. Is it first thing in the morning here, Tracy? Or you get like a lot of us sipping coffee, coming over to pay our bills or?
I, I think it's pretty consistent through the day, but mornings are definitely the busiest.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, you could have the library and other places though, too. I mean, it's not like, there could be other locations too, Dana.
Well, that's a good transition into me switching hats, because one of my jobs was to talk about other vetted locations. And I'm, if anybody wants to listen to how many locations we've actually looked at, I'm willing to share that now.
Looked at for town hall, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, well, yep.
People interested in that?
Yes.
And, and Bob can help me out. I'm gonna, and I don't even know where, oh, the first one I'm looking at right here, the address that came up, I did some pin drops, and it was three twenty Newbury Port Turnpike. That would be the governor's, the governor's site, which we've already discussed, you know, why that's probably not a viable option. My next pin drop, let's see, where is this? Yeah. There's a piece of property that actually would be for sale, and that's on the corner of, because a lot of people have wanted to centralize the location of the town hall, you know, geographically in the town. That's been a topic. So I kind of looked for some sites that would do that. On the corner of Route One and, and Boston Road, it's, it's right beside where Newbury Self Storage is now. There, there is a site there. It has some issues, though, one being it, it has a, a wetland issue. And probably the single biggest issue is that the sewerage and the utilities that we talked about, that would be one of the parameters that would kind of make that not a real viable option either. The third site that, that the committee, not when I was on it, but the committee looked at last time, was on the corner of Hanover Street and Route One, which is where Holistic Family Practice used to be, was a site that was looked at. It does have an elevator in the building, which is a big plus. However, the, the, the building layout wouldn't really work for what we're trying to do. And the, in the other probably worst case is the parking is totally inadequate there. I mean, it would be a great location. We looked at it in the past. Again, it's probably not a viable option. The fourth one I'm looking at is what we just talked about, about Walton Avenue, which is beside the Round School. We've talked quite a bit about that already. Then, of course, we have Twenty-Five High Road, which is the site that we've been talking about all night long, about the advantages and disadvantages of that site. Let's see, I already looked at that one. Oh, this is something, Bob, you might be able to help me out with this one, but Nineteen Central Street, it's the building in front of the Rusty Can. Didn't we go down that road at one point in time?
There, you know what, there were a number of suggestions. But as you, when you start to look at the criteria that we, that we have, we had to hit, it was probably the age, as I recall, there's some gaps in my participation here.
I understand, I understand.
Might be a good Eric question, but.
Right, that would, that's why I was, I was kind of hoping.
But as I recall, it was a twenty-odd year old building or, or more, and.
Yeah.
And again, it would, the, the, the big thing with an existing building is, is it big enough in size to meet your programming needs? And then you can at least consider, you know, remodeling or extraordinary repairs. Otherwise, you're spending more money than just doing new.
And the energy codes have certainly put a whole new layer on everything.
The new energy codes.
Which we passed.
Are a challenge where that every new building, and this is going to be, you know, they're talking about gas stoves and all that stuff. Every new building under the stretch, stretch energy code has to be designed so it can convert to all-electric.
I think if I had anything to do over again, I would have voted no.
Well, I, I purposely included all the towns that voted yes. There was only a handful that decided not to, but the, the stretch energy code is a factor. I'm going to give you an example. At the police station, I made a big deal about two-by-four walls at the existing Twenty-Five High Road. The police station R factor had, was twenty-two R, R twenty-two. The wall thickness is six inches. We put spray foam on the inside, and we had to put a four-inch rigid insulation with plywood glued to it over the entire exterior envelope to get this R twenty-two rating. Two-by-four, bay, you get an R eleven rating. And so these are the things that just make doing extraordinary repairs or, or major renovations of any substance just obsolete.
So if you have R twenty-two in the walls, and probably the roof is even more, where does moisture go?
Mr. Walker, that's a great question. Buildings, buildings are very tight.
We can still open a window, I think, right?
When no one's looking.
You need a really good HVAC system.
It doesn't work, Dana, you know it, I know it.
Uh, one more, one more site location that I, I was reminded of, and that is the Town Forest, which is the, the piece of property that's adjacent to our transfer station. We have, we have quite a bit of property out there.
Yep.
It's, it's a solution. When, when you compare it to all the other solutions, the issues are no city water, no city sewerage, accessibility, it's, you know, every, I don't know how many people are familiar with that neighborhood or not, but, you know, it really, it would be traffic issues, I think, going in and out of there every day. You know, again, you'd have to, you'd have to build the parking lot, you'd have to put in the leaching field, you'd have to, you know, dig wells. I mean, it's, it's, it's another location that was vetted, and it just doesn't, it just really doesn't fit the bill, so. I, I'm always saying this because I, I want people to realize that the committee has looked at a, a lot of sites in town. That's all I want to say.
Yeah, and, and to your point, Dana, back in two thousand twelve, on the original site selection committee, we looked at Woodbridge School, Governor's Academy, Mantle Field, Byfield Library, considering a town hall, police station, fire station combination, or a site to be determined, which are the sites that you've named. We, we've been doing this since two thousand twelve, and one thing we learned about the police station is cost per square foot went from three hundred and fifty dollars per square foot in two thousand seventeen, two thousand sixteen, to six hundred forty dollars a square foot when we broke ground in two thousand nineteen. So it's the old saying, time is money. If, if the town wants to have a facility on the upper green that they can be proud of, and they want to make the investment, the time to do it is now, not, not to wait two, three years. Any other questions? But thank you, thank you for your time, and, and as always, thank you for your public service.
All right, thank you, Bob. And before we entertain any public comments, something I meant to read at the beginning of our discussion, and it got by me. On Tuesday, March seventh, twenty twenty-three, at the library at seven PM, the Select Board will be hosting a joint meeting with the Municipal Building Committee, Planning Board, Finance Committee, and Capital Planning for a project update. And following that, Saturday, April fifteenth, and Saturday, April twenty-second, the Municipal Building Committee will be holding informational sessions. This is the, the best opportunity for public engagement, plenty of time to ask questions, bat things around. And the, the time and location of those meetings is still to be announced, but that will be Saturday, April fifteenth, and Saturday, April twenty-second. So anyone interested in getting more engaged with the process, those are great opportunities. Any questions about the project? Come on up, Jim.
One oh four Elm Street. I'm addressing this to the Select Board. The town has warned the inhabitants of Newbury that they intend to renovate and add on to the town hall building. Town has done this openly, notoriously, and consistently at the ATMs and the STM's since two thousand fifteen. The Select Board, we're three years behind in this project. We know the costs are going to be huge increases because, on the construction costs, where we could have been three years ago. Additionally, there'll be a big cost in financing, because the construction costs will be high. The town has moved four million dollars into the town hall account over the past seven years. So I'm asking for an explanation, accountability, as to why the town is not performing as it told the citizens of Newbury. I think tonight's discussion was very enlightening, very open, and I think the few meetings you're having in March and April are going to continue to add to this. But the consistent thing the town has done is told the people they're going to add on to the existing town hall building. And you're turning your backs on the people. For seven years, you've been telling them this. You've been taking money and putting it in the town hall account, which in itself is a good move, but you're telling them that it's for the renovation of the old building. So the proposal on the table is consistently and, and completely against what you're telling the people.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Alicia.
Can I, can I respond to that?
Yes.
Thank you. Hi, Jim, thank you for those comments. The town, the town meeting has consistently put money aside for a town hall solution. I think that my understanding was that being, of, Newbury is very Yankee, and it has a lot of Yankee ingenuity, and we put money aside. And I believe that if renovating that meet, that building was viable and not cost the taxpayer significantly more, I think that would be a venue that the town, or at least the Select Board, me personally on the Select Board, would be willing to, to entertain. But the mere fact that it is cost prohibitive, and we just, as he explained tonight, we have stretch energy codes, we have been working towards a town hall solution. I think if we could renovate and add on, that would be great. But it being what it is, we can't. To say that we're three years late, I'm, I'm a little confused by that, because once the town, once the town hall, once the police station was complete, that was all done during COVID. Once that was done, I believe it was within less than a year, we moved, appointed this committee to start looking at, at a town hall. But I heard loud and clear from town meeting on more than one occasion, that they did not want to do this, these projects together. They didn't want them combined. They wanted to do them sep, separately. And that's what the town has done. Does that answer your question?
I, I can't agree with you that it's not a viable situation, Alicia. It, it can be. I've written to the building committee twice in the fall, once recently, and I've also sent the town a letter on this. It's pretty clear that I'm of multiple issues. It, it can be done. The town has yet to put forth to the voters what the cost difference is between renovating the old and building the new. It's a simple task. If it does, it may prove out that building a new building is the best way to go. But until that's done, you're not, you're not proving anything. So I, I asked why that can't be done. I, I know it can be. Bob would be the first to say, hey, you take the old building, what it costs to renovate, six thousand square feet, build another addition to it for six thousand square feet, those are certain dollars. You compare those to the dollars you have in the estimate, the difference. the difference between is what you explain to the townspeople. If it costs, if it costs $2 million more to build a new building, then maybe it's in the best interest of the town, you do that. But it should be done. And the other consistent thing is, you've got to turn to the voters and tell them, listen, we've been telling you something, but it's not everything it should be.
Any other questions about the project, Jim?
Alicia?
Jim? Any other questions about the project?
No, Alicia was speaking.
Thank you. Have a good night. Any other questions from the public about the project? All right, moving on. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Chair, we're getting, um, do the grant. I think you.
I know, we're going to take that at the end, Julie. Thank you.
JR?
Yeah.
Just to, not, I keep hitting the wire here tonight. I actually thank Jim for telling me that there has been people that continually think that there wasn't a process ever that would compare the things going forward. And, you know, when you think of an old building and the extraordinary measures it would take to rebuild and refit, and then have to build another two-story, build them beside it, I, I, thanks for, I just never thought there were people out there that really just kind of didn't think we were going to go forward with the cheapest. But I thank, I thank you for.
All right. We have a one-day liquor license. Byfield Community Arts Center, February 18th, 2023. Is everything in order, Julie?
Yes.
Can I entertain a motion?
I got to get back to, where were you, quick, the liquor license. Motion to approve the one-day liquor license for the BCAC, February 18, 2023, for a wedding.
Second. Okay, roll call vote, Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
JR Colby, yes. We have some business license renewals. Steven Gadd, DBA Salter Transportation Incorporated, 196 Scotland Road, general business, school bus, and transportation.
Motion for new Steven Gadd, DBA Salter Transportation, 196 Scotland Road, general business, school bus, transportation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. Another business license, Richard Salmonson, DBA Bridgerood Signs, 9 Graham Ave, general business.
Motion for license renewal for Richard Salmonson, DBA Bridgerood Signs, 9 Graham Ave, general business.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. All right, we have some police department appointments. Patty, would you like to speak to it?
Yes.
I'm excited about these two appointments.
Yeah, same. Good evening, thank you very much. So as we move forward with filling in the blanks with two promotions that happened throughout the department, we have posted and done a process to fill the detective sergeant position that was vacated with Deputy Chief Wacowsky's promotion. And that was going to a sergeant. And then, so therefore, we posted for the sergeant's position for that, which we had, excuse me, I have a cold. We had, we had an assessment center ranking as well, so we just updated the scores for that to come up with our candidate. So tonight, I am requesting that you guys appoint Stephen Jenkins as the detective sergeant and Officer Steve Smith as sergeant.
Entertain a motion.
I would make a motion separately.
Separately, because we can't, we don't have, we don't have the sergeant position without the detective sergeant being full.
I would make the motion review, approve, and sign for detective sergeant Stephen Jenkins.
Second.
Discussion. I, I just want to open up both of these gentlemen, but Steve Jenkins, you know, I've watched him from afar, that's, you know, more so since I've been involved in the town. And I really like what I see, the way these gentlemen interact with the public, the way they interact with our young people. I've seen them both at Triton High School. And I remember when I was at Triton, the kids would go like this around the police offices, you know what I mean? It's not like that anymore. They're walking up to them and saying hi. And, and it's just, I, I feel really good about these appointments. I just want to share that, you know, with the public. I really like what I see with these two people.
I appreciate that because I feel the same exact way. They're both, both very approachable, looking, what I'm looking for in leaders within the department to fill the gaps that we have. They've both been with us a very long time. I have copies of their resumes if you guys need to see them, but they've both worked with the department. They started as dispatchers as well and worked their way up. Steve Jenkins started with us when he was 19 years old on the desk. So he already holds a lot of responsibilities with training for us, for the department, and he's just well-respected. And again, very approachable. He's, he's what we're looking for in that position. So I'm glad that you mirror my thoughts on that as well.
Okay. Any other thoughts from the board?
No, just, just in the future, if you have the resumes, if you could give them to us, that would be great.
Certainly. They were updated when they applied with the personnel jackets, but a perfect, great, thank you very much.
In the future.
Yep.
Okay. And if there aren't any other questions, I'll move to a roll call vote for Stephen Jenkins. Dana Packer?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. Now I would entertain a motion for Stephen Smith.
Motion to review, approve, and sign for Stephen Smith promotion to sergeant.
I second it.
Any discussion? We'll go to a roll call vote. Dana Packer?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Fisher.
Thanks.
Under old business, we have none. Administrator's report.
Sure, thank you. The Council on Aging had a successful bid opening, and we have contracted with Creative Bus Sales, Inc., for our 14-passenger van, our new van. We would expect to take delivery in about nine months. A little bit of a lag time there, but.
Still exciting.
Very exciting. The Parker Street Trail Project is almost complete. There may be updates since I wrote this, but final permanent pavement striping will be done when the weather warms up, and the contractor still needs to loam and seed and take care of a few minor items. Is that still accurate?
Yes.
Okay, great. Animal control, I just wanted to let the board know and the residents that although Newbury's animal control officer retired back in October, we have not been without animal control coverage. Residents have full animal control services and should continue to follow the process of contacting dispatch with any ACO concerns. In the meantime, we're still continuing to meet with Rowley, Bauxford, and Ipswich in the hopes of finalizing an MOU for regionalized services, beginning, that would be effective July 1. Newbury Elementary School, HVA C Planning, some of you may have seen that on our capital improvement plan. We met this week with the two facility managers for the town and for the school, as well as Triton's business manager, and had a conversation with Kevin Preventure of Habib and Associates. They've done a lot of the engineering study work for Triton in the past, and they're going to get us some cost estimates, get us a proposal to see what it would cost for them to take a real good, hard look at the existing conditions of the system. So we'll get a better idea of what that potential repair might cost, or, or replacement, I should say. National Grid has been out here working with us on a fleet advisory report. What we're doing is conducting an analysis to understand what vehicles the town currently possesses that may lend themselves well to electric vehicle replacement in the future. And that was one of the recommendations of the Capital Planning Committee when they reported out to you last. The Senior Center recently hosted Coffee with a Cop. The officers provided attendees with information on scam prevention. And I, I don't know, Chief Fisher wants to talk more of the details, but it was a great event, very well attended.
It was. It was a great event. We're really looking forward to doing it every month. So part of our, you know, community initiatives are really important to me. And one of the things we started was Coffee with a Cop. It was really quick, easily, easy to put together. We're going to be doing it on the third Wednesday of each month at 10:00 AM. So that will always be in the, the COA newsletter. And what it really is, the mission of it is really just to kind of break down barriers between police and senior citizens by allowing kind of opportunities to casually engage with one another, play games, and get to know each other, so that when there's a vulnerable incident, a question, a crime, the seniors are more comfortable calling the police. It's easier to call Officer Patty, or Officer Steve, or, you know, Officer Caitlin than it is to just call a blank police department. So we really want to kind of create opportunities for people to get to know all of our staff. And it's our goal to rotate in the evening and the overnight officers into these events as well, so that you have exposure to all of the officers in the departments on the various shifts where emergencies could happen to you as well. We will use the, the events to do kind of mini trainings and in services. This time, we talked about the grandparents scam and scam prevention, and hand out any prevention material that we have, but they really, they just enjoyed kind of hanging out and getting to know everyone on a personal level. So we really are looking forward to doing that. We had about a dozen people attend, and we're hoping that that increases as it becomes more familiar and consistent. Yeah.
We are on it. Are they at the police station or at the council?
Down at the Council on Aging. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sounds like a great program.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The officers had a blast, the seniors had a blast. It went over even better than we could have anticipated. So we're glad, we're glad we have it to do.
Nice job.
Well done.
Thanks.
Nice job.
Also wanted to report that we have completed the contract negotiations on the DPW's collective bargaining agreement. That will be appearing before you at your next meeting for execution, discussion, conversation. We, earlier in your agenda, you, there was a note about a grant award. Lindsay Turner, who is our Assistant Treasurer Collector, was the grant writer. It was a workspace ergonomic grant. We had someone come out and kind of evaluate everyone's positions and their desks and the way they, they were sitting during the workday. And this grant will allow us to purchase some document holders, footrests, and desk rises for those individuals that were identified as having issues. So, let's see, Kristin Kazner, Representative Kristin Kazner was here yesterday. I had an opportunity to meet her and was very impressed with the grasp that she already has a number of Newbury's issues. And she is also going to be coming in to introduce herself to the board at your February 28th meeting. We got her on the schedule for that. One correction I wanted to make, a few meetings ago, Selectman Walker had asked about line striping.
About what, please?
Line striping on town roadways. I had mentioned that it would be done in the spring. They will not, however, be striping Larkin Road. That's a road that has not been striped in the past. Just to clarify that. And finally, COVID test kits are still available for free in the Board of Health office if anyone is looking for them. That's it.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman, did we over, accidentally go over the, the grant? Do we have to vote to accept the grant for the law?
Yes. Sorry.
Entertain a motion to accept the grant?
Motion to accept the grant for.
$4,931.
Yep.
I'll second that.
All right. Roll call vote. Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
JR Colby, yes. All right. Any meeting updates?
Yeah.
Okay, I have.
Mr. Walker and I and Alicia, we attended the DCC meeting this past week, where the major discussion was the tentative budget for the schools, which unfortunately will be increasing by two point, two and a half million dollars. So, and it's tentative because the governor, being a new governor, she gets an extend, an extension on her deadline for getting the money in. So it'll be tentative until sometime in March when they get the state figures.
And that increase pretty much represents us continuing to levelly fund what they have going on, rather than adding many things, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah, they, they, yes, they cut a lot of things out. They had requests, and then they, and, and a lot of the requests by the different departments at school were not included in the budget, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one update.
Next time you do it.
On Newman Road trees. I've met with Peter Pensiaro of Trustees Reservations, and I am going to meet shortly with Tim Lamprey. It's been narrowed down to several tree species after I talked to trustees, so I'm going to bounce those off of Tim, and I hope to have more information at our next meeting to update you with. But that's what that process.
Is this the replanting is what you're talking?
Correct.
The species that we're going to replant?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll work together with Tim and trustees to select a species that should live a decent life there.
Did you say on Newman Road?
Correct.
Okay.
So they're still taking down as many?
Yes.
Yeah.
The marked ones.
That's staying the same.
Yeah, this is strictly talking about replanting in the spring.
Good.
Yeah, nothing new to come down. All right. We have some meeting minutes to approve. We have draft meeting minutes from January 24th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote. Dana Packer?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Alicia Greco?
I'm going to abstain. I wasn't here.
Okay. JR Colby, yes. Do we have warrants tonight, Julie?
Yes.
Motion, motion to approve warrants.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.
And JR Colby, yes. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Pat.
Okay. Roll call vote. Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
Alicia Greco?
Yes.